And I did it too.
I wrote down everybody's name and when they came in for the naming. So hopefully, we should be about equal.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
I say, do we all want to write down what we got for totals and just hold them up at the same time? Make sure we're all on the same. Sorry. So I got 286 emails sent to my darling@boe. One of those emails was 20 students from Elm Street, which, thank you guys so much. There were 99 that went into amazing detail about Brian McCarthy, talking about not just what he did in politics, but what he did throughout his life. And it's incredibly inspiring. I highly recommend. If you guys haven't gotten a chance to read through them all, they're awesome. And then the remainder, so 187 of them, were in favor of a more neutral name, ranging from, I believe we had three that talked about honoring the indigenous people that were here before us. And then a lot of them were based on the streets that the main entrance would be on.
Ms. Johnson?
How was your guys' evaluations?
Okay. I was off maybe about four for Alderman McCarthy and maybe two for just overall. There was about 53 for Buck Meadow, because most people said they would like it named after the street that it was on to be, and with tradition that we've done all along in the city versus naming after a person. And I just would like to say something about that, because, and this doesn't have any disrespect for Alderman McCarthy, because I served with him for many years and I knew him. And I always felt that he always wanted to be transparent and everything, to be fair and honest on every process that we did. And that's just the way he was. And I could say that I remember when him and Mrs. Hirsch did the watershed, and that's how important it was to him to make sure that nobody built within a certain feet of our wetlands. So I remember everything he did for the city. But when I look around the city and some of the emails said, basically, that many people don't know who he was. And if you take a look and you ask a lot of new people in the city, who was Dr. Crisp? Who was Holman? Who's Stellows? Who's Mata? And we know that Mr. Stello has passed on, and he was a great man in this city too, gave a lot to the city. I think that there's another way to honor Alderman McCarthy, and a better way that people will actually know what he did for this city versus the name on the school. Because I don't want years to go by and people going to say, who was this person? Because we're not going to put a plaque out there that talks about him. He was so involved in STEM and technology. I think we should name a wing of the school, the STEM of Technology and Technology Department, in his honor and put down all his accomplishments and what he's done for this city. Because I think that would be a greater reward and honor for this man than just to have a name on a school coming in. And I think that's the way, and I think he would have done it in a lot of other phases in this city, because that's the type of man that he was. Thank you.
Ms. Brown then, Ms. Darling.
Ms. Brown then, Ms. Darling. So I think based on, is there more detail you wanted to go into on your presentation?
I actually wanted to build off something Paula said. So you go first.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, let me then go first. I was talking to an individual in our community today about the naming, and it was pointed out that we have the ability to dedicate this school to Brian McCarthy, but name it after the street that it's on, which would also give him the plaque, the memorial, all of his accomplishments written out. Might be a decent compromise to have the entire building named dedicated after him or dedicated to him, rather than just a wing. He really did do a lot for Nashua.
Ms. Brown?
So, in light of the information that we got, hundreds and hundreds of emails from the community, and the general consensus I felt came through was that we wanted to make this a unifying opportunity to celebrate both individuals and Nashua as a whole. And I also think, in the name of tradition and everything, I'd like to move that, and the ad hoc committee recommend to the Board of Education to name the new school Buck Meadow Middle School and provide naming opportunities for individual areas on the campus to recognize inspirational leaders from the Nashua community.
I just want to write it down properly.
She's got to hide her secret next motion.
Okay.
Okay. So Ms. Brown has made a motion that the committee recommend to the board that we name it the Buck Meadow Middle School and provide naming opportunities for individual areas on the campus to recognize inspirational leaders from the Nashua community. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. I am going to be supporting naming the school, the McCarthy Middle School, and not Buck Meadow, only because in speaking to 12-year-old boys over the weekend, they had a lot of fun things to rhyme with Buck Meadow. And I would be remiss not to, I'm not going to share them, but I think we can all use our imaginations on what 12-year-olds rhyme with silly words.
So...
What?
Is the sound of the location the only deterrent for you, or is there anything else? Because I think the other option that is location-based that we got a fair number for would be Coldbrook, and you could still name the interior locations for that. Is that, would that be something...
Cherrywood came up a lot, too.
Cherrywood also. I like Cherrywood and I like Coldbrook better than Buck Meadow, but I would like to honor McCarthy and all the stuff that he's done for the city. I mean, having been here for like 100 million years, the growth that has happened in Nashua has been on the backs of McCarthy and the time that he spent as an alderman. And to see that growth happen, you know, this used to be sand pits we used to come and ride our bikes in. You know, Stellows was a place that we hung out after school. I've seen this city grow, you know, from my childhood into my adulthood and seeing my kids benefit from it, because Alderman McCarthy was there to help initiate all of this stuff. The growth that is Nashua now is because of him. And I would like to honor him that way, because we don't often get to honor the people who do all of the hard work. So, I mean, you can keep throwing out names, but I'm just going to say no until it's McCarthy.
Ms. Brown?
So I'd like to speak to my motion, if I may. So my first reason for doing this is consistency and tradition for having location-based schools in Nashua. At this point, we only have one school that was named after Dr. Crisp, and that was based on this very small local community. The school of, this middle school is going to be serving students from all over the city of Nashua, all economic regions, and the goal is even to be busing children that don't live in that vicinity to Nashua. So it should be something that is conclusive and recognizable for the whole town. Secondly, I think it's a slippery slope, naming a school after a politician. No matter how wonderful an individual is, there is always a large risk of dividing the community based on personal politics or feelings. A public school is a place where everyone should walk in the doors and feel equal ownership and have, feel shared representation, which I think is why we have an opportunity here to celebrate more Nashuans, which, by naming the interior facility, the interior of the facility under different things. Finally, there's been some debate, both via email and via phone calls, that whether any of the individual individuals that have been suggested the name actually meet the qualifications for Policy FF, based on whether they really were education-specific background or not. If we avoid naming the entire building or consider a dedication, rather than naming the entire building after an individual, we keep the process clean, more neutral, not politicized, and we can still celebrate other influential Nashuans inside with stories and plaques on the wall. And finally, if I can, and I know it's really long here, but I'd like to read an email we got from a fantastic student, Julie Sage, who submitted, last week she came in and she spoke to us about Dr. Cyan Proctor, but actually she reconsidered her name. And she, I'm just going to read the email. "My name is Julie Sage, and I previously submitted a suggestion of naming the new middle school after Dr. Cyan Proctor. However, when attending the first meeting about the naming of the school, I found out the naming protocols and learned that if a school is named after a person, person has to be deceased. But while at the meeting, the interesting thought was brought up. Then naming the school something more neutral in the naming areas after people from Nashua. I am suggesting that naming the school Inspiration Middle School. The mission that Dr. Proctor was on was a very historical event. It was the first orbitable orbital space flight that only private citizens, non-trained but not only citizens, were on board. In Inspiration, many areas in the school can be named after amazing people that came from Nashua." She still goes on a little bit further about where the finding like inspiration and neutrality in the school. For instance, Roy Campanella and Don Newcombe Fields, the Dr. Proctor Library, the Alexandra Socha Music Hall, all people who achieved a lot that were right here in Nashua. "I know a lot of the Board of Aldermen want to see a name after Brian McCarthy, but none of us know who he is. We won't know that the school is named after. Instead, maybe one of the administrative buildings can be named after him if they aren't named already. Another option is naming the lecture hall at North at Brian McCarthy Hall, since North was a project where his school board, where the school board meets. And there are a lot of other ways to honor him in places where he, that already honor him in places where he was directly involved." There's a few more. Let's see. "I really think it's important to name the school after something during these meetings. I want to, I'm sorry. Things we have no emotional connection to..." All right. It's two more paragraphs. So it's long, and she was very passionate. And Julie, thank you so much for your citizenship. But I think she makes a really good point here, is that we have so many people in Nashua that we deserve to have representation, not from just the politicians. And we have an opportunity here to celebrate that. And I think if we look the other way, we're really going to be making a mistake. And I'm wondering, Armani, would you be willing to add anything?
I just, I have a question for Ms. Bishop. You want to like recognize McCarthy. Do you not see a dedication or like naming after a wing or a facility as enough? Or what's the reason for the whole school?
I want the middle school to be named after Brian McCarthy for all the things that he's done for the city of Nashua. I am one vote of nine. If this makes it out of committee, there's still, how many other people that are going to vote on this? So I don't know how they're going to go. But I'm one vote on this, and I'm sticking with it.
I think you was just trying to clarify if you had like more of a thought process to it.
No, I just, I like it being the middle school. Yeah, we do have to take into account, you know, what the rest of the board members, I mean, whatever makes it out of committee. We still have to remember that there are other board members who, I mean, they're not here tonight, so they don't, I take it if you don't show up to committee meeting, then you don't really have a huge dedication to it. But we have to remember that there are also votes and take into account what they may want as well. So, I mean, let's, let's do the vote.
You don't see me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
This is what Paula and Regan and Neil have to deal with.
I know. I'm the same way. I automatically turn left when I'm speaking, because I don't know why.
I want to sit over there in that blue chair, and then I can see everyone.
Right. You'd think this would be convenient, but it's not. I just wanted to say, and I'm going to repeat it on Monday, and I apologize, I don't frequently drag a soapbox to the meetings and like speechify, but I'm going to Monday as well, because I just want to recognize the appreciation that I have, and I think I can speak for almost all of us on the entire board, for all of the people who wrote to us. I learned so much about Nashua over the last two weeks, and it was really cool.
Fourth grade all over again.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't here in fourth grade, so I didn't learn all this stuff back then. And, you know, Virginia, they teach you different things in fourth grade.
Right. You know about Virginia.
Yeah. So I was just really amazed and interested, and my poor family for the last, you know, week and a half, you know, they'll be like doing something, and I'll like pop in and be like, "Did you know?", and then share my new piece of Nashua trivia. And so I'll speak to it more on Monday, but I think that whatever this committee decides and whatever the full board decides, I would like it, and I'll do it, for one of us to share with the community some of the names that were submitted to us, like Roy Campanella and Don Newcombe, the first African-American minor league ball players in the country a whole year before Jackie Robinson, Dr. Proctor, who we've talked about before, and Ms. Sage and all of her education of us. I mean, is she the one who told us that there's like a WWE wrestler that's from Nashua?
Yeah. I used to work for his...
Triple H. Okay. Triple H is from Nashua.
I used to work for his sister.
Who I had to Google, sorry. But still very interesting.
Just tell me you had to, they used to work out at Gold's Gym. You guys obviously aren't from around here.
No. I had to Google it. So this was, this process for me as an individual, as a parent, and as a board member on the Board of Education, was very educational, and I really enjoyed it. And I just wanted to thank everybody who wrote to us and everybody who has come to these committee meetings for taking the time to make sure that we got that feedback. Because it's, it's fun sometimes as an adult to learn new things, and especially to learn things about your community. So, and I'm just, I love how much people have given back to our community.
In order to potentially save time, Ms. Brown, would you like to modify your motion to not be Buckwood?
Buck Meadow.
Buck Meadow? Sorry.
Yeah, that one was worse.
It was, wasn't it?
Imagine the T-shirts.
Well, I mean, Ms. Bishop said she's not going to vote for it anyway. So is there anyone else that, I mean, do you have a suggestion?
You can just vote.
I mean, I would literally choose either Cherrywood or Coldbrook over Buck Meadow.
Okay.
I'm not a fan of the Buck. I'm not going to lie, for the same reason as Ms. Bishop. It's been playing in my head for weeks.
All right. So I...
Leave it to me to think like a 12-year-old boy.
Would like to submit an amendment to my motion to make it...
You can just change your motion.
Coldbrook.
So we're modifying the motion to say, move that thus ad hoc committee recommends to the Board of Ed to name the new school Cold?
No, I think it's Cold is what the emails were saying.
Cold with an E or Cold with a D?
Cold with an E.
C-O-L-D is the...
C-O-L-D. I officially think that it shouldn't be Coldbrook.
Didn't I say Cold?
And I think the audience might agree, too.
Hold on, I'm just double checking.
We're having trouble with that.
What I said.
C-O-L-D.
C-O-L-D. Yes. Sorry, I'm not enunciating well.
My own writing.
C-O-L-D-B-R-O-O-K.
I'm so, you couldn't have given me this for a second. All right. I would like to modify my motion again, to reflect Cherrywood. Thank you, whoever said that.
Okay. I'll write it down here sideways. It's not, oh, I don't care. It's just fine. Cherrywood Middle School. Okay.
Should we allow for public comment by any chance?
We have a motion on the floor, so we'd have to agree to forego the motion for public comment. I am trying to pay attention to the time, knowing that we have public comment built in on Monday, too. So I could go either way.
Yeah. Just because it makes it out of committee doesn't mean it's necessarily going to pass the full board.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, in that case, I would rather wait to do public comment until the full board, so everybody hears everything. Yeah, thank you.
That was my thought as well, frankly.
No, great. Perfect.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
No.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So 2-2 is a fail.
Ms. Brown?
So I know the motion failed, and maybe we can consider a different motion to bring it back to the board or bring it back to the floor that is still not, I do not think we should name this after an individual for the building. I think it is divisive. I think it's been highly politicized, and I think that we all know that the, there's definitely a politicized skew, a political skew for a party-based skew on the emails we got. I didn't want to have to go here, but I've got, we have to be clear about this.
Well, it goes both ways.
Hold on a second. And I think by making this neutral, we can celebrate more people, because everyone in this board, especially after the last few years of a divided world, we have an opportunity to give more people of more ethnicities, of more genders, of more...
Vocations.
Vocations. Opportunities to be celebrated in the community, and that is a wonderful message that we can send to our students. And I think this is an opportunity right now for the no votes to live up to the messages on the signs, all the signs on your front lawn. I think it's an opportunity to vote for all Nashuans, not people with political influence. And I think it's an opportunity to celebrate neutrality and bring people together, rather than, I go back to my original reason, everybody who walks into a public school should feel like they're on common ground.
So I'd like to make a motion that we present the full board with the option of Cherrywood or McCarthy Middle School.
Yeah. On the meeting on May 25th, what was discussed at that meeting? Because there's no minutes where Alderman Dow said, "Meeting stands. Any issues, call me." That was supposed to be a committee, an ad hoc committee, but turned into Joint Special School Board Committee Meeting.
Subcommittee.
And where's the minutes to that meeting? And that happened in room 208 that I wasn't even invited to. So there has to be, there has to be minutes.
Right. They're not our minutes, though. They're part of the city website minutes.
Have they, does anybody know if they've been typed and put up there yet? Well, nobody knows. So you know what? I think the board has a right to see what those minutes said, because as far as I'm concerned, and I feel like this was solicited ahead of time, because the night that it was brought up on our meeting, Alderman Dow sat here apologizing for that meeting. And when a member of the ad hoc committee, an alternate, isn't even invited to it, to me, I have problems with that.
I think Attorney Bolton clarified that, that no invitations technically have to go out, but when it's presented on the calendar, it's your responsibility to know where you're supposed to be.
No. We had two different opinions on that, from one attorney to the other in the office. You know what? I'm not going to argue on that, but it was your job to put me on that email, because I didn't even know it was happening. I didn't know till after the fact. And the rest of the board should have been able to be on the CC on it. So if anybody wanted to attend, they could attend. And I really believe that we've had solicitation here on this whole thing, and I'm reading all the emails, and it was wrong. I mean, this should have been a neutral thing, but it started off wrong, and I don't want it to end wrong, because this is the first time the citizens actually has had some participation from when we were hiring a superintendent to now. And so this is going to go to the full board, and I hope there's not going to be any more solicitation to every member, that every member comes in with an open mind and listens to what the public has to say.
Well, ethically, that's what we're supposed to do anyway.
Well, that's what we're supposed to do, but that's not what we're doing.
Oh, I have, yeah. Ms. Raymond?
Couple of small things. One, I just looked it up. It's under the Joint Special School Building Naming Subcommittee on the, which the Joint Special School Committee created that committee, a subcommittee. Anyways, it's on the city's website, under the JS SBC.
They had no right to do a naming, a sub, they had no right...
I can't control what the JS SBC decides to do with creating their own thing.
And that's why we didn't...
We discovered it.
Right.
We fixed it by creating this particular committee, which we've invited you guys to be on.
For the record, you two are both on the JS SBC and were on the subcommittee. So to say that you don't, can't control it, that's pretty much in there.
Okay. I have one vote out of 10 people on that. But what I'd like to point out here is that I'm feeling significantly this year testy, because it's constantly pointed out that some people are being divisive and some people aren't living up to the, what was the quote, "The signs on their lawns."
I think we're...
Instead of having reasonable conversations about the fact that different people on the same board can disagree on stuff. We had 286 people respond to our call for names, and they did not all agree. And every person who wrote to us felt strongly, they, with very little exception, had a long list of reasons why they felt that the name that they were suggesting was a good name, but name of a person, or name of a place, or whatever. I don't understand why we continue to have problems on this board with people who can't just say, "This person doesn't agree with me on something, but it's okay. They have their reasons, and I have my reasons, and I'm not going to attack them personally for it." It's ridiculous that we can't keep moving forward without having those things come back anytime there is any type of major decision that the board has to make.
And I think what we forget is, even when those things are said, people's minds aren't changed. So we can sit here and talk until we're blue in the face to try to convince people to agree with us, and it doesn't matter, because people have already made up their minds. So...
So I just, Ms. Bishop, I'm trying to take minutes as we do this. Ms. Bishop had made a motion before other people started talking, because twice now we've, we've kind of put things out of order and not been following the way things go. So, Ms. Bishop, your motion was to provide the board with the option of choosing between Cherrywood and McCarthy?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I speak to something first before we try to...
Doesn't anyone want a second then?
I just, I want to write it down, because that's my job. And I'll, I'll second it so that it's not hanging out there. Go ahead.
So, one of the things that really concerns me, I, when I first came into this, my first thing that I said was that we shouldn't name the building after a politician. And then I got to reading about Brian McCarthy and understanding his position in our city as more than just a politician. And that honestly, like I was so ready to come in here and fight tooth and nail to celebrate him. My issue comes from the fact that in that meeting that everyone keeps arguing about, that minutes are not up for yet, the very first thing spoken was an individual saying, "I am here to ensure that this happens." And it was an individual that is not part of this committee. And I understand that nobody here is responsible for that. My concern lies in the fact that, yeah, I believe that you guys both have amazing ethics, but it doesn't look great that all of this kind of piled in one direction. And I, what is really killing me right now is that as badly as I want to keep fighting for the McCarthy name, I feel like doing so is saying that once again, politics are winning in a way. And I ran for this, because it's in, we're not supposed to live by politics here. And I know like it's an election season, and we're all trying to smile and be good, but at the end of the day, I mean, when so many people leaned one way and not the other, and there is all this backdoor stuff, no wonder people are calling us out. We all should be ashamed of ourselves for not communicating more, not being more open when we can be, myself included. when we can be, myself included. I would love to see this name be neutral, and my goal had been, after the motion to send the full name, would have been to also recommend to the Board that we dedicate the entire building to him, and that we designate a spot where a memorial will, I don't know if memorial is the right word, but, an entrance, as something that will be to commemorate all of his amazing accomplishments, with photos, with everything else. Because I can tell you, when I went into Dr. Crisp the other day, I don't know who Dr. Crisp is, but I do know that the boy and the girl from every 5th grade class, the one that shows the most leadership, their names are on a plaque with what they've done. And I would list the names for you, but they're current students. And I only know, I think, four of them off the top of my head. So, I think we could do something more, while also removing the silly backdoor politics that have led us up to this point, because we need to make the decision to be better as people now, not tomorrow.
So, based on, so, I mean, take this, this meeting that everyone has an issue with off the table. I read all of the emails in favor of McCarthy, and no matter who they came from, my personal opinion is, they had a more compelling reason to name this middle school after, and I don't want to say politician, because I don't consider, I don't consider us politicians, we're local do-gooders, he was a public servant. I mean, if you guys want to be politicians, that's fine, I don't, I just want to make a difference. But, anyway, it doesn't really matter what happens, or what we think, it comes down to a vote. And we can do all of the name-calling and shaming that we want to do, what matters is the yes or no vote that we give when it's presented to the Board. Point is, I mean, that's with every single thing that we do on this Board, it's yes or no. Your opinion only matters when people, when you have an audience to share it with. And then, what makes the difference and the change is the majority vote.
Right. Can I just speak for one more second on politics, and how ironic I find it that people are being accused of backdoor politics and playing politics? We're talking about somebody who is not a member of the same political party as the majority of the people on this Board, nor with the people who like the name, never was. So this is, you know, a person who served Nashua, who, you know, almost 100 people emailed us and said, "We recognize this person's service to Nashua, making sure that this particular project happened," and here's a list of the other reasons, and people are like, "Well, eh, because you like it, it must be political." I'm just so sick to death of...
It's political because it's been spoken about at both city committees.
Right, but here's the thing, I'm not an older person, and I can't control who, what the older people do. I don't try to. All I try and do is vote here. I suggest that, that this committee, being four people, was probably not the best idea, because we're just going to end up deadlocked, and that letting the full Board decide might be the way to go. Because I wouldn't take a minority view on the Board, put them in a majority on one committee, and then say that's the way we go, which I think is the other option.
I do want to say, when I had said that my next motion had been to want to dedicate the building, that was before it was brought up that we could suggest both names. If that is within the rules, I would support suggesting both, and let the full Board fight it out.
Because we're going to have the exact same conversation on Monday night.
Basically.
Yeah.
So I call the vote.
All right, so on the motion to call the question...
For the record, that was pretty rude to Ms. Johnson and to myself with our hands up, but this is the...
Oh, I'm sorry, is it not my right as the Chair to call the vote? And not give you the floor?
You have that power, go ahead.
You're going to say the exact same thing over and over and over again, until you try to convince me to change my mind.
I'm not going to say the exact same thing.
There's no point.
I'm not going to say the exact same thing.
On the motion to call the question... Let's, okay. So, yes, call the question, no, keep going roundabout, okay? Jen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes. I don't even know what the motion is anymore, to be perfectly honest.
The motion, that's why I just repeated, the motion is to vote or keep talking?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I'll be yes to, so that's 4-0 on calling the question. So now we're going to vote, and the vote is, I'll read it again, "The motion to provide the Board of Education with the option of choosing between McCarthy Middle School and Cherrywood Middle School." Yes? Okay. Bishop?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
No.
Did you anticipate me?
No, she turned her mic on to say...
No, oh, okay, I was like, wait, I wasn't looking up, okay. Ms. Darling?
I am also a no.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so we're deadlocked again.
My no specifically is because...
All right, I move to adjourn, because I don't see us moving forward in a productive way in the next 10 minutes before the next meeting comes. Does anyone second that? No? All right.
I don't right now, sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Brown?
In an effort to try to work through this, because we are apparently on a very short timeline, is there any way that you would compromise, is there any name in the community with a dedication, a plaque, a bench, a bust, is there anything that would honor McCarthy, that would make, change your mind to name it a neutral location?
No. Isn't that negotiating in bad faith?
We're not negotiating.
I mean, I'm just, it's, I feel like there are all these different opinions and sides, and I'm hearing people say, like, "How can we accommodate what everybody wants, and you can't accommodate the masses on a no?" There's just no, like, I think what we're trying to do is come up with something that's not going to lead to people fighting over this. It's stupid to fight over.
Yeah.
But when you're, of course it's going to be a fight, it's two versus two, that's what keeps happening here.
Which is why I think that us two are trying to ask you guys if there is any compromise, or if we are truly, if we're truly deadlocked, let's bring it to the floor.
What's the alternate to that? If I said to you, "What would it take to get you to change it so that you went with this one particular name that I like?" Which, by the way, I haven't come out and said anything about that yet, but the point is, is that if I propositioned you with, "How do I get you to yes on my view," and you said, "Eh, I just, I just don't agree with you," I wouldn't then turn around and berate you for not agreeing with me, or suggest that you're not being willing to compromise because you won't come to my other side, you know, the opposite of what I wanted. It's, my position here is that we are deadlocked, we need nine people to make this choice. I think that the role of this committee was to solicit the responses, which we have done, and then the role of the full Board is to make the choice. We can present options to the full Board, and if I had my druthers, I would give them probably three to choose from, but that's, I don't think that this committee should take on telling the full Board what the full Board should do. I don't, I think that because we don't have an overwhelming majority, even on a small Board, that we shouldn't be making that, a full recommendation that this is the name.
Point of order, according to Policy FF, the Ad Hoc Committee will consider the suggestions and make a recommendation to the Board of Education for the naming of the facility.
Right, that's what I just said, we should make a recommendation of, I think we should put multiple names in there.
Now, I just want to say...
I think everybody got all the same emails, like, somebody can show up at the Board and before we even start...
I'll finish printing by Monday.
Well, everybody got the emails in there.
Read them.
Yeah, people can read the emails, they went out to the Board of Ed, not just the Ad Hoc Committee, so we can show up on Monday.
For the community.
And somebody else can just, like, show up, I can call the meeting to order, and they can throw out a motion right when we come in.
So, I do want to clarify something, I'm not trying to get you guys to change your mind, I'm trying to ask if you have in mind any things that are of interest to you, and if you would like to ask me what things would make me want to switch right to the name, I would tell you that my original stance was no names, that I am compromising in my belief of names by putting a dedication, and by wanting to put a mural, and by wanting to actually commemorate what he's done. And I am not trying to convince you guys to vote one way or another, this is absolutely your opinions, I was just trying to clarify why the question was being asked.
My point is the, is the lack of respect back and forth between certain members towards other members, and I'm tired of it.
I just need to jump in here, because I can keep my hand up all night long, and it's not going to happen.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
You know, first of all, let's clarify a couple of things. In this city, even though we know what party you're with, it is a nonpartisan race, so to say that this person's at this party and this, you know, if we're going to divide it by parties, then we're never going to get along. We need to divide it by that we're working together as a team, and that's the way it has to be. And it seems like we don't have teamwork here, and it hasn't been for a long time. The second thing is that Ms. Darling and I, and Ms. Brown, are trying to make this more of a memorial for Alderman McCarthy, so when people see the name, they know who he was, rather than just a name on a building that, like you say, who was Dr. Crisp? Who was Jimmy Stellows? I bet you didn't know who was Jimmy Stellows. Who was, who's Mr. Motta? Okay? Who is Mr. Holman? It's just a name on a building. But if we can take a part of the school, and talk about this man's accomplishments, and what he did not only, because I was around when we built these two schools, and how he ran the Joint Special School Building Committee, which is being run, was run much better than it is right now, and he took pleasure in it, that's what you want to memorialize, but not just the name on the building, that nobody's going to know who he is 10 minutes, 10 years from now, or five years, or two years, because the community is growing again. And the people who are moving in have no clue who some of these people are. So if you took the wing, or you dedicated the building, and you put a plaque like they have in the Board of Alderman Chamber, that to me tells you what the man stood for, and what he was about, other than a brick wall with the name on it. That's what I'm looking at. And Buck Meadow, you know, because kids make fun of it, kids make fun of everything in life, so we're going to, we're going to be, you know, in this, we can't name something because a kid is going to change it from this letter to the, I mean, that's silly, that's silly nonsense. Buck Meadow, Cherrywood, what was the other one?
Coldbrook.
Coldbrook.
There's Medallion too, it's attached to.
I mean, there were so many of them. I mean, and I counted, there was, like you said, there was 99, I was off by four, and 180-something with other names, so 187, which were neutral. But that's how I'm looking at it. Let's give him, let's memorialize him, rather than a name, a plaque coming into a school, and nobody's going to know what he did for this city. That to me doesn't say very much. It's just Nashua North, Nashua South, Elm Street Junior High, Pennechuck Middle School, Fairgrounds Middle School, those are all named after the streets that they're on. And so, give the building a name that it should have on the inside, a plaque on the wall, and let's talk about what this man has done for this city. Thank you.
Well, it's 5:50, so I think the motion to adjourn is now appropriate, and I think we're just going to have to deal with this in a full Board meeting.
So, are we not taking anything to the full Board?
You didn't vote on anything.
So you want to, so really, your guys are not willing to come up with, all right, I have another motion. Make it a little bit more benign, maybe this will be something we take to the full Board, we can at least get that. I move to recommend that we name the school after a location, and make dedicated plaques on the interior of the school.
Can you just...
The only difference is that we don't actually, it'll decide, at least it'll get us moving in a direction, rather than defining the actual name of the school. Is that an issue, or is it only McCarthy or nothing?
For me, it's actually the naming of the interior spaces, I just think that's dumb, but that's just my personal feeling, and I am probably outnumbered on the Board by that, I just, I don't, like, I don't like the idea of having, you know, like, the so-and-so library, and the so-and-so gymnasium, and that just seems needlessly complex.
Information, Heather, if I move to name the school Cherrywood, or Buck Meadow, or Coldbrook, would you vote for any of those names, if I remove the portion about the interior?
At this point, I feel like this has become a hostage negotiation, and all I want to do is send it to the nine, the eight other people on the Board other than me, and have them have their say in it as well, because I suspect what's going to happen is that the people on the Board, if we send them, I suspect that what will happen is what has happened at this meeting, where there are people who have read all the emails, and who have made a very firm decision in their mind, and that they won't welcome a suggestion of saying, "We want you to do this," whether this is this one person, or this is this one location. I already said that I would prefer to give them, to narrow it down to two or three options, but this Committee wasn't willing to do that. That's just me. So, that's the thing that I would have voted for, I did vote for, at this point, I probably feels like I'm, like, passing it on, but...
Going to end up at the full Board anyway.
So, right now, we actually, our Committee, we don't have anything to take to the full Board, we don't even have a, we have nothing to submit to the full Board, so at this point, if we were to adjourn right now with no motions, I recognize it, Jimmy, if we go over, we're just going to have to deal with it for a minute, I'm sorry, dude.
We can't, it shuts off.
Heather...
That's the point, though, you keep saying that, if we go over, that's what you said last time. So keep talking, keep talking faster.
There's no recommendations sent out to the Board.
So, if there's no recommendation, there will be no motion on the floor, and on, for the, to send to the full Board, that we won't, it won't be, it's not an agenda item until this Committee brings it forth.
It won't be on the agenda, but that doesn't mean somebody can't just come into the meeting. How many times did you just come into the meeting when it wasn't on the agenda under New Business, and you just made your own motion about remote schooling?
So what I'm saying is...
People can come into the Board and make whatever motions they want, whether it's on the agenda or not. This meeting is getting to be pointless, because we know somebody is going to come into the full Board meeting, on the agenda or not, and make whatever motion. That could be you.
But this Committee is no good.